Welcome to tonight's meeting of the Lunenburg Select Board. Today is Tuesday, September 23rd. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
In accordance with the requirements of the open meeting law, please be advised that this meeting is being recorded and broadcast live over the Lunenburg Public Access Channel, on Facebook Live on the Public Access Facebook page, and will be uploaded to the Lunenburg Access YouTube channel after the meeting. The agenda lists all the topics which may be discussed at the meeting and are those reasonably anticipated by the Chair. Votes may be taken as a result of these discussions. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed, and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by the open meeting law. We're going to begin tonight with announcements, and I have two. In October, the Lunenburg Public Library will host a number of special events to celebrate the 20th anniversary of our beautiful library building. Those events include, one, a kickoff celebration on October 3rd from 6:00 to 7:30 p.m., featuring a performance by the Lunenburg Middle High School marching band, the announcement of the Friends of the Lunenburg Public Library Summer Writing Contest winners, a presentation on the history of libraries in Lunenburg from Bill Tyler of the Historical Society, and refreshments from local small businesses as well. And the second, during the month of October, library visitors of all ages can find three scavenger hunts to explore this gem of a library. Each complete scavenger hunt will be automatically entered into a prize drawing. In addition, a library of services fundraiser will be available with patrons able to claim donated skills and services from members of our community in exchange for monetary support of the Friends of the Lunenburg Public Library. And third, a month-long celebration will conclude with a closing ceremony on October 24th, a birthday party-style celebration with cake and fanfare. Winners of the scavenger hunt prizes will be announced, and representatives from the Friends of the Lunenburg Public Library and the library's Board of Trustees will briefly address the community. All right, the event will conclude with a 75-minute concert. And finally, the Lunenburg Community Spaghetti Supper will be hosted at the Lunenburg Adult Activity Center tomorrow Wednesday night from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. There will be pasta, meatballs, bread, and soda, $7 for adults, $5 for seniors, and $3 for children. All right, up first, we have a toll booth application for the Eagle House supporters and the Lunenburg Teen Center in support of the Lunenburg Adult Activity Center and the after-school program at the Teen Center, and the date is October 25th, 2025, from 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. So we have Andy and Nicole here, and for a bit of background on this, they were both trying to get toll booths set up for, obviously separately for their organizations, but it happened to be on the same date, and then they came up with the idea of pretty much combining them, and I think your plan is to just split the proceeds, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, awesome. Well, thank you for coming up with that solution. It solved a headache that we had. So if there are any questions from the board?
No, I'll just abstain from this vote, just based on the concerns with the policies. I understand that they've adhered to, adhered to the policy.
Understood. Do you want to voice what the concerns are?
Just overall, overall safety, but I could, I could go into more detail once, when and if we ever like review the policy, but...
Understood. Any other questions from board members? No? Anything else you guys want to say? No?
Just thank you for your opportunity.
Yep, of course. All right, well, with that, I will move to approve the toll booth requests from both the Eagle House supporters and the Lunenburg Teen Center for October 25th, 2025, 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m.
Correct.
Any additional discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The motion passes unanimously. All right, thank you both for coming in tonight, and I hope you guys have a good toll booth.
Thank you.
All right, see you guys around. Okay, up next, we have earth removal permit renewal. So two are on here, only one of them is going to be considered tonight. So the first is PJ Keating, 998 Reservoir Road, permits SBER-25-1, -2, -3, -4, -5, and -6, formerly permits 15, 16, 17, 27, 30, and 57. The other one that we're not going to be considering tonight, but is actually going to be renewed at some point another night, is Jim Lantanzi, 780 Northfield Road, permit 61. So we do have Brian, our Building Commissioner, here. He inspected the sites, and we do have representation from PJ Keating here as well to answer any questions that board members may have. So I'll open it up to the board now. Are there any questions on any of these permit renewal applications?
Mr. Chairman, through you, if, if we just want to maybe inquire as to the Building Commissioner, he inspected the sites, what his findings were, and if he has any recommendations for the board on renewal?
Okay, and he is on Zoom. Brian, do you just want to share your opinions here?
So yeah, as most board members are aware, I've inspected this site from both the Lancaster side and the Lunenburg side, so I am familiar with it. Site inspections this year were very smooth. They're making improvements with equipment, dust control measures, they've got some new misting systems in place, and despite the very dry season, the dust controls were great. I mean, I think I passed two water trucks during the tour in less than an hour. All the sites are in compliance, some of the parcels they still aren't really using, they just keep it on the permit. It was orderly as always.
All right, thank you, Brian. That's definitely good news. Any questions or discussion from board members?
No.
All right, is there a motion then to renew the PJ Keating earth removal permits?
I move that we renew the PJ Keating earth removal permits. Do I have to name all of them? As listed in the agenda?
Second.
Any additional discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The motion passes unanimously. All right, thank you guys for coming in tonight. Thank you, Brian, as well for joining us.
Do you want to just have him?
What?
Oh, I'm pointing through you to this camera. Do you want to just have him speak to his inspection? We had, so Mr. Lantanzi had originally sought to not renew his permit, and as part of that, the Building Commissioner went out just to inspect the site, and based on that inspection, he's going to renew. Do you want to just explain? I think there's only a small amount of material.
So yeah, this started with a large sand pile up in the back resulting from his tree removal, not tree removal, his Christmas tree operation, as you guys may, may not remember from when it was issued. He didn't sell off all the material, there's still a sizable pile out there, and he expressed interest today in now renewing it. Again, he's running the trucks as required, going onto Northfield instead of on the Chase Road. What few trucks there are, I think he said he sold 1,000 yards total, that would be at most 50 trucks, maybe, off the site. I don't have the exact number, I don't know that he had much of a log in terms of how many trucks came off. Seemed pretty low impact, and I, I know now he's going to be seeking to renew instead.
Okay, yeah, so we need to get that application ready, and then we'll have it before us in a future meeting. All right, any questions on that one? All right, thanks, Brian.
You're welcome. Have a good night.
You too. All right, moving on to public comment. Any public comment from the board? Any public comment from the public? Come on up.
Hi, my name is Rob Foster. I'm the Chair of the formerly Lunenburg High School Alumni Association, now called the Blue Knights Alumni Association. We're in the process of reconfiguring and stressing, putting in systems and things to make the...
Sorry to interrupt, but just before you go, can you also state your address for the record?
25, 25 Fitchview Avenue, Lunenburg.
Thank you.
We're in the process of reconfiguring the association to make it a much more powerful fundraiser than it has been in the past. We wanted to make the town aware that we're holding our banquet at the Bull Run on November 2nd. We're shooting for the maximum number of people that the fire laws allow us in the sautel room, which is 250. We usually get about a 110, 120. And I also wanted to let the town know that our honorees this year are... Those are the people who we're going to honor, and then, we don't usually honor faculty, but this year, we're going to honor Pete Lincoln because it's well-deserved, to say the least, and it's an interesting coincidence that both Deb and Pete are being honored at the same time. So we encourage people to come out. Tickets are $45 a person. They can be garnered at our website, BKAlumni.org, or on our Facebook page, Blue Knights Alumni Association. That's it, thank you very much.
Thanks for letting us know, we can definitely help make this announcement, too, so more people see it.
Appreciate it.
All right, awesome, thanks for coming in tonight. All right, any other public comments from the public? Any on Zoom? Not seeing any. All right, up next, we have ratify the Town Manager's appointment of Penelope Bayliss as Library Page effective September 24th, 2025.
So, this is an entry-level position, and Penelope has shown great eagerness in wanting to join the library and has absolutely researched what the program's mission is, and we are excited to have her start her first job in her life with us.
Awesome, sounds great. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to ratify the Town Manager's appointment of Penelope Bayliss as Library Page effective September 24th, 2025.
Second.
Any additional discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The motion passes unanimously. And next, acknowledge the resignation of Amy Driggers, the Assistant Accountant.
Okay, I'm going to kind of be talking about that directly into my Town Manager's report, so...
We'll talk about it then. All right, Town Manager.
So, through the Chair to the public, the board is aware, the Town of Lunenburg has had some pretty substantial changes in our finance department, so we, we had a planned retirement for the payroll and benefits position. Nancy O'Rourke, who has been with the town for some time and has a tremendous amount of institutional knowledge as to our systems and our collective bargaining agreements, is retiring at the end of October. For that position, the position was advertised. At the last meeting of the Select Board, you appointed a replacement. That individual unfortunately has taken another position. We did another round of interviews for the position and made another offer. That person has declined the position. So we will continue to interview candidates. We are finding qualified candidates in the applicant pool, so we know that we are marketing this position correctly, it's just a timing issue. Unfortunately, what that means is we may not, the time is running narrow for us to have overlap in the position. We really wanted a month of overlap, at least, for this position. So let me pause for a plan and segue into the next item. So Amy Driggers is our Assistant Accountant, and I was very sorry to receive her resignation last week. She is going on to neighboring Lemonster for a position in the Controller's Office, and while we wish her well, we had an immediate vacancy in that position. So there is a contractor who has worked in the past with the town on accounts payable. We have brought that contractor back. He is starting, he is a retired finance director, he lives 10 minutes away, he's worked with us in the past. He is currently working on a contract three days a week in Rockport, so he can provide us two days a week, Wednesdays and Fridays, for accounts payable services. The reason why I paused for a moment on the plan for the payroll benefits administrator position is because we are actively interviewing qualified candidates for the accounting position. We had a lot of, a great pool of candidates for that position, so it's possible that Stephen may be able to slide from the accounting work in a contract over to the payroll and benefits. I'm going to talk to him about that tomorrow on his first day here and see what the feasibility of that is. If not, I'll be looking for another interim contractor in, in the meantime. And then, last but certainly not least, our Finance Director, Azee Ayala, is going back to the private, nonprofit sector, and he's off to be the Executive Director of the Latin American Health Alliance in the city of Worcester, which is a huge and tremendous opportunity for him. Upon receiving his resignation, I got a contract in place for transitional services with Eric Kinsherf, CPA. He provides these services across the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. He is already meeting weekly with Ezzie, he is assisting with closing out our books for FY '25. And we have interviewed for that position, and we have, I had a round of interviews, there was another round of interviews held this weekend. Thank you for, to the Chairman, Caesar, and Renee, and Chris Menard, who were able to pull that together quickly. This is a critical position, especially with the other two vacancies. So we do have an offer out, and we have that offer accepted. So I'm, I guess, excited to say for the first time that Katie McKenna, I'm happy to have her joining us as Finance Director, and we can be talking about an employment agreement at the next meeting of the board for that. So while my, I have a few other items on my Town Manager's report, so while my topics are slim, this has been the top priority for the office. I have to give credit to my staff for being very malleable in dropping everything, reposting, interviewing. Ezzie has had more interviews. He's, thought he's filled this positions so many times over, so I really appreciate the work that everybody's been putting in. I think folks are really, you know, concerned about making sure that the transition happens in a good way. The next item is the bag fee increase that was voted at the previous meeting. We said an October 1st start date, residents, you have a little bit of a reprieve. October 15th is going to be the start date, so go out, buy your bags, we're going to start messaging it this week, but get them now. You've got 15 extra days for the lower price. So October 15th is the day for that increase. I want to thank everybody who pulled together the Whalum 25 Years of Memories event last weekend. I am official, wearing my Whalum shirt. You're welcome, Mr. Tyler, if you're watching. So that was, it was really great to see so many people come out and look around the room and talk about how Whalum impacted their life, whether they remember going there with their parents who have since passed, or they worked there. The indelible mark that Whalum has left on this community was evident in that day. So it was nice to be able to commemorate what once was, 25 years later. And I think that that's it for updates. So current recruitments, we have the payroll and benefits position that we are actively interviewing for, the Assistant Town Accountant that we are actively interviewing for. The offer has been accepted for the Finance Director position. We do have a nine-hour-a-week dietary aid position that is posted, but we are not currently interviewing for, so if anybody is interested in that position, send in your resume. Same with Equipment Operator, we are actively interviewing there. Land Use Director, we have started interviews today, actually, it will probably be a few more weeks of interviews for that position. The Children's Staff Librarian position is posted, I do not believe interviews have started yet there. Administrative Assistant to the Building Department, we've had a number of interviews and will continue that into next week. Offer going out for the Recreation Director position this week. And that is it for recruitments, and the same list of appointed and elected boards as last time. I'm happy to read through those, but otherwise, I will forego the reading of the boards and committees that are available.
I think that's okay. Any questions?
Does the Planning Board participate in the interviews for the Planning Director?
So I have invited the Planning Board Chair to participate, and the Building Commissioner, and myself, and the HR Director round out the full complement of who's been in the interviews.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, thank you. Moving on to current business, right of first refusal for 222 West Townsend Road, and this was in Chapter 61B. So we have recommendations from all the boards, and all of them recommended not to exercise our first right of refusal. So I'm just going to open it up to discussion and see what board members say. I don't know if you've all had a chance to actually look at this property and read all the feedback yet. What's also the timeline for this?
So, so good question. So the...
It's 120 days.
Well, it's 120 days total, so we have time for the board to make a decision. It's the, the actual date, where is my email? So the, November 19th is the 120-day date, but we are at the point where the Select Board does need to make some decisions. So the Select Board's office, once you receive feedback per your policy, that feedback is to be discussed at a public meeting, and then compiled, and sent back to all the other different entities that have weighed in. It would be my recommendation if the Select Board also is inclined to waive its right, per the recommendations that we waive this notice requirement of the policy, sending it back to the boards. If there is a vote of the Select Board to pursue, so it's, this is a soft vote tonight, I guess, it's either, if, if you're going to waive your right, it's, we can say that we're going to end the process tonight, but if you, there's a majority vote of the Select Board to pursue the, to exercise the first, the first refusal rights, then it would be placed on a future agenda for a public hearing.
Okay, gotcha. All right, thank you for that. Are any board members interested in actually exercising a right of first refusal for this property?
So we, we heard from the other committees that none of them recommended that we exercise our right of first refusal, but do we get any feedback from them, other than, we don't recommend?
So sometimes we do.
Why? I didn't see any, but I don't know.
Yeah, we have all these emails.
They just said they don't recommend it.
Yeah.
I didn't notice any.
I think there was one from Open Space that said that it didn't, it wasn't contiguous.
With their actual requirements, because they have quite a few about what needs it, I'm pretty sure.
And they've all voted, just so the board knows, this application was submitted twice.
Right.
So they voted twice. Let me go, so it might have been in the old one from Open Space where they did give that reason why, just give me a sec, I'll pull up that email.
Related to your question, Ms. Emkin, we're getting a little off-topic here, but this is more about our policy. I do think there's a way that we could maybe like improve this, and maybe like standardize like exactly like, all right, like, don't just tell us that you voted, maybe like, you know, give us some actual feedback, and we could like determine what that looks like or something like that.
Yeah, possibly reasoning, or reasoning why.
Right.
I mean, I'm not familiar with the property, so...
Mic's too hell, right?
For Open Space?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, he just said no.
Yeah, I didn't really see anything other than whether the votes were in them. So, yeah, there's nothing else really there to discuss in terms of actual recommendations, but all of them said no.
Yeah.
So Glenn, that was a no. Brian or Renee, any, any interest?
No, I would go along with the recommendations of the other boards and committees, and I also would like to see the property on the tax rolls, too.
And through you, Mr. Chairman, to the public, the board is seeing it, but the public is not. The buyer, or the seller has submitted, buyer, I guess, has submitted a notice of intent of what their intent is to do with this property, and it's to develop six buildable lots on the parcel. I think the total parcel, because it's two lots, is, I see mics on here, I think it's around 13 acres. Am I mic?
It sounds right, that I can verify.
13.31.
Yeah, that is, okay, that's what I remember seeing. Okay.
And there's one, one structure currently on the, there's, on the total of 13.31 acres for the entirety of the lot, part of the land is not in Chapter, part of the land is in Chapter 61B, recreational, and, and so there's one structure on the part of the land that's not in Chapter land. One home, right?
Okay. We do have Mr. Blood on, he was the gentleman who just spoke, I don't know, I think he's mostly here to answer any questions regarding the plans, is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And he is the seller?
Buyer.
Buyer, okay. All right, any questions for him, as, since we have him on here?
Nope.
Nope, okay. So do we want to actually vote on this tonight? Vote to waive our first right of refusal?
I'm with me.
All right, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to waive our right, first, right of first refusal?
First, yeah, you got it.
For 222 West Townsend Road.
Second.
Okay, any additional discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The motion passes unanimously. All right, thank you, Mr. Blood, for joining us tonight. Okay, up next is representation by Mead Talaman and Costa of the Town of Lunenburg and the City of Fitchburg for the contract for the supply of water. So this is something that we'll have to vote to authorize the Town Manager to sign, but I'm also going to have her explain what this is.
Sure, so there is a older intermunicipal agreement between Fitchburg and Lunenburg for the sale of water. That agreement is expiring, and it's time to execute a new agreement. Mead Talaman and Costa represents both the Town of Lunenburg and the City of Fitchburg, which is normally a conflict, unless the parties acknowledge the potential for a conflict, and then, but say that we don't reasonably, that common representation would be okay. In this letter from them, they say that their understanding is that the firm's representation will be limited to serving as a scrivener to draft the firm of the, form of the agreement. The firm will not negotiate the terms of agreement. So you would be voting tonight to authorize me to sign, which would mean that we would acknowledge that the town understands the advantages and disadvantages of allowing Mead Talaman and Costa to represent both communities, and that if a conflict does occur, that Lunenburg consents to the firm representing, essentially, we have to, each of us will have to get our own counsel in the matter, and we can't use common counsel. So his understanding is that it's not going to be a negotiation, but if it is, they may have to withdraw, but otherwise, mutual representation in the matter.
All right, any questions on that? Okay, I will move to authorize the Town Manager to execute the...
Representation.
Representation letter. By Mead Talaman and Costa of the Town of Lunenburg and the City of Fitchburg.
Second.
Any additional discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The motion passes unanimously.
I should say for the record, I believe Fitchburg's already approved it as well.
Okay, cool. All right, moving on to old business, discussion on annual, oh, and special, Town Meeting Warrant articles. So we do have a draft of the booklet here, the warrant. I wasn't really planning on going through each and every single one of them, since we do have a couple of weeks until the warrant closes, or...
Next, for the public, next Thursday.
October 2nd?
Correct, October 2nd, 5:00 p.m.
Okay. Do you know the date that we need to mail the warrants out? Do you have that readily available?
Mm-hmm.
In front of me. I just want to look at the calendar here.
Okay, so the absolute deadline to get it in the mail is November 4th.
November 4th, okay.
So we have it for almost a month.
That's actually very nice.
But what about printing?
Yeah, so it has to get printed, unless we, unless we don't do a booklet.
So that's not like our actual, like, we must have it completely finished?
November 4th is the date that it needs to get, the post office is sending it out, so...
So we should...
So we have a couple of weeks, though.
But really, we have like the first two weeks solidly of October...
Correct.
To go through, vote on articles that we're definitely including in the warrant in our recommendations, and I feel pretty good about that. Three weeks potentially, if we really need to.
I'm, I'm hearing the articles are still coming in. I just heard a Planning Board, simple zoning change articles coming in, but...
Okay.
One of the items, if I do want to raise at least one of the articles to the board, if that's all right, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
If folks want to open... If folks want to open... I just want to make sure it's the right one. I think it's the TCP roof estimate. Oh, that's not in color, okay. All right, if folks want to open the TCP roof estimate document, August 25th?
Ours is in color.
Yours is in color?
It is, yeah.
Oh, good. Okay, so, uh, we had talked a little bit. There had been a town meeting warrant article for $300,000 for repair of a portion of the roof that is going to be in the, part of the building that's being decommissioned. We had talked about potentially moving that funding to move it to another part of, of the building to replace the roof there. Chris Ruth, the facilities director, did cost out the total cost for the roof, which is, including a contingency fee, he's estimating that at $1,360,700 for the roof replacement. So, I did ask him, well, what could you do with the money? How much roof could you do for that $300,000, because I figured that would be a question that came up. And there are two areas overlaid that are green, two rectangles, both covering approximately six classrooms, except one's covering the cafeteria and gym. In response to that, I said, well, where are the leaks? And naturally, the answer is in both sections.
Right.
So, okay, so I did reach out to him and say, well, in your professional opinion, what is your recommended approach? Do we, do we take this in pieces and repair what we can now with today's dollars and the funding that's available? Or do we bring this through the traditional capital planning process for the full roof? And in his professional opinion, he thinks that by doing it in sections, we could be exposing issues in the future, and that his preference would be to bring the full project through the capital planning process and do the entirety of the roof.
What does he mean by issues in the future?
If, if there's two different ages of the roof, if there's seam lines, if there's just not being constructed as one project to complete one piece of membrane across the entirety of the new roof.
Well, the two green boxes? So, yours isn't color.
I know where the green box is at, so.
There's still, the, the rest of this purple is outside of the green boxes.
So, what, so if you were to do the entirety of the purple section, it's 1.3 million.
Okay.
So, that's his recommendation, so that you, so that you don't have the jigsaw effect on the roof of just doing one of the green boxes.
Or just doing the two green boxes.
So, you can only do one with $300,000.
Right, but to do both is going to be less than 1.3.
Right.
Almost 1.4 million.
Maybe 600.
The obvious question is, what is the future of TCP?
Right, so this is your, the, the town remains to be in a bit of a catch-22 with all of these projects. The more the town says, we need to know the long-term plan for this building, the more the town, and defer maintenance at the same time, the more the town guarantees what the plan is for the building.
Right.
If you are deferring ma, maintenance year after year after year, the plan is going to become solidified for you. So, but it is his recommendation that we don't, we leave the $300,000 in the prior year capital for now. It could be part of the funding mechanism for the 1.3 million dollar project, not a lot of it, but a portion of it, and that we piece the funding together, but don't, don't do this in sections, do it in one fell swoop.
Okay.
So, the concern I have would be, would that be delaying the, the roof repairs where there's already currently leaks?
Yes, so.
It would.
Unless, unless capital planning, so you'd be potentially delaying it by a year if capital planning decides it's a priority to fund in FY '27. If capital planning, it says, no, we need more information, or we get feedback that we'd really want a full-scale study, and who knows? It depends on where that goes. If it's a year, I don't know that I have those same concerns. If it's five, six, seven years, delaying making this decision to not repair part of it, I don't know if that makes it worse, then, but...
Now, the beige portion, the top, is that a foregone conclusion that that will be abandoned?
So, it will, at this point, it's being decommissioned, so it's not being used. The next step for that beige section is that there will be the asbestos remediation in that section, because that's needing to happen no matter what way you go. And then that section waits for the overall plan. Either renovate that section as well, or that that section's ultimately removed from the building. I can't say, obviously, at this point with any certainty, but I have heard that that's the way that folks seem to be leaning, is to remove the back portion.
Is that roof leaking as well?
So, that's the, so the back portion, the first three classrooms on the, on the left and the right, as you go back there, that's the section where the $300,000 was slated for, and that was directly over the administrative offices for the schools, and the leaks were the worst there.
And PAC was there, too, right?
Uh, no, around the corner.
They had leaks, too, though.
There, and there's leaks in other areas. So, no decisions. I just wanted you to be aware of that, so that that's when you look, look at that document, that's what that means. I'm happy to discuss any other articles as contemplated.
Mm-hmm. Yep, anything in the warrant or that's not in the warrant that members want to bring up for discussion tonight?
The only thing I, I had brought it up before was the, the additional Chapter 70 funding for the schools, if there was interest in having an article there for that.
Is there any update on those conversations?
I mean, my answer to that is the same. So, there already is an article for that. That's been the answer that's the same. I have not heard, I have had my private conversations with the superintendent. Thus far, I have not heard any use or need for the money. So, reiterate, use or need for the money. I am not inclined to transfer any of this money at Fall Town, at, at the Fall Town meeting.
Okay, thank you.
I had a question about the Personnel Committee article.
Okay.
I, I just want to, I want to clarify, sorry, I just want to add one more thing. But in my talk conversations with the superintendent, I did say that the article is there. The motion can, the motion can change up into including the day of town meeting. The article to carry it is on the warrant no matter what.
Okay, so it was just done differently last Fall Town meeting, that's why?
That was totally unnecessary, and I don't know why it was done that way. It could have absolutely been.
That's what's throwing me off.
Yes, it was done as a separate article last year. That is, so the school budget is voted as part of the FY '26 omnibus budget. I would imagine that it was potentially done different that way, so that you did have two votes, so that you wouldn't fail the other transfer vote that was taken. If there was a no vote on the Chapter 70, that it was separate from whatever the other transfer vote or adjustment to the budget was, to unhinge them. You can have multiple motions under the same article to have that same effect.
Thank you. Renee?
So, dissolve the Personnel Board. There's no language in there yet, but do you plan or expect to have a proposal, like an alternative, not, we're going to dissolve it and we have no, no Plan B?
So, Julie's been doing a lot of research. She's about done with it. She has examples for you from other communities of what they brought to their town meeting. I would say that if, if we had to have more than a concept of what happens if, we don't have this capacity right now in office to have that kind of policy work stood up in, in the background. I suppose another way that you could, well, so right now, you could always put a delayed vote, a delayed date on it, so you could do an effective date, dissolve it as of da-da-da, to give the lead time to stand up the policies. As it stands right now, though, I want to be clear, in the absence of a Personnel Board, because there were some questions about this that came after the last meeting, the way it is defaulting is that the town manager is the Personnel Administrator. So, without a Personnel Board, I admit. I think people misheard that in the public when there was conversation about wanting to disband it, and they were hearing that this was a power grab. In fact, it's quite the opposite of a power grab. It's trying to get decisions that were once spread across more than one decision-maker out of one decision-maker. So, so in the absence of a Personnel Board, which it's been well over a year since there's been a Personnel Board, and we have not received a single applicant, the town manager administrates, administers the Personnel Bylaw. If we get rid of the Personnel Board, which I think is the suggestion from the chair, then there can be something else to stand up behind it, such as those decisions that were once vetted by the Personnel Board could be vetted by this board. So, right now, if you want to approve somebody being hired over the midpoint of the wage and step grid, that's an approval by the Personnel Board. Personnel Board's not here, so it's an approval by me. But that could be an approval by a body like this. So, I don't think we can stand up all that framework in the background by town meeting. But Julie is, I mean, she's put together the research for you. I would say if, if somebody wants to take that and put it into policy and make it a Select Board policy to stand that up, then it, if it's, as long as it's not office capacity, yes, I think it's absolutely doable.
Okay. All right, any other articles or potential articles we want to discuss tonight? Okay. Recommendations to the Master Plan Steering Committee on the Master Plan Update. So, the town manager went through and added in comments for all of the things related to policies and what follows under our jurisdiction, what doesn't. I do not plan on reading through all of this, so did you guys have a chance to look through? Do you have any feedback on any of it?
And I will not be offended if you disagree entirely. This is just something for you to all react to, so.
Right.
I do not have time to go through this.
Okay.
I appreciated the comments from the town manager. I think it was well-written. I think the concern is I just didn't want the town manager to have to do extra work, but
I know.
I think it's, it was important work to get done, though, too.
Okay. Anything else that we want to flag here to discuss before we send this back to them?
If folks do need more time with it, we, our deadline's September 30. We are going to be having a meeting, I believe, Mr. Chairman, before the tri-board meeting to do an appointment anyways.
We are, so we could bring it up again.
It's possible that we have another meeting.
But I think, I think this is very thorough, and I appreciate the work that you did to fill in the gaps from everything that we did not discuss the last time we had this on the agenda, so.
I just want to make sure that it, where I, you know, where I kind of said that it aligned with a Select Board position or that I, because I was kind of using what I thought.
Yeah.
That that, as, as long as that truthfully aligns with where you're at, then.
Yeah, I'd like more time to review.
Okay. I mean, we could always sort of try doing this asynchronous, asynchronously over the week, too, ahead of next Tuesday. So, I guess if there is any recommended feedbacks that could be sent to the town manager to...
Compile, yep, absolutely.
And we could do it that way ahead of the next meeting, and then if there's a lot of stuff that comes in, then we'll know that.
We need to have a discussion.
Yeah. All right, how does that sound? Okay. Moving on, discussion on the tri-board meeting of the Select Board, Finance Committee, and School Committee. So, our next one is next Tuesday. Any discussion on anything related to tri-board meetings?
Who's presenting?
That's the schools, right?
No, no.
No, not, okay.
No, it's police.
Oh, that's October, sorry.
Police, fire, DPW, facilities.
Oh, it's that one. It's a heavy meeting.
And we have been talking to them about maybe a little more brevity in some areas and identifying the areas where really call, like, if there's nothing major that's happening, if it's just, you know, one to two and a half percent, we don't need details. But if it's something that is an outlier, going up, going down, something's on the horizon to really identify those areas and, and project out as much as you can, at least, that, flagging the issue spots for folks. I don't know, I don't.
Good.
I, I don't know. I don't know how folks are feeling about the process, I guess, so.
I mean, I'm feeling pretty good. I think it's been very educational. I think the collaboration, it's interesting. I mean, we're still sort of in the beginning of it, so we'll see. Like, I, I feel like it's kind of premature to really form opinions on it. I will say I don't think anything negative has really been happening, so.
We have, we have three more nights of substantive information, so it's, it's after the, after the, those that I just discussed, then it's the schools, and that's going to be a long night, I would imagine. And then there is kind of everything else, so general government, all the other stuff.
Right.
And we're just getting into the meat of it now, really.
Yeah, for sure, for sure.
I know there's some people who are saying, why hasn't anything happened yet?
I know.
Well.
It's so early in the process, like, you know, we've got to be a little patient and just let the process play out. You know, we still have a lot of departments to cover, and, you know, we'll get to that part, so. No, that's what I have to say to that. All right, any other discussion on that tonight? All right, and the last thing is to authorize FY '20-26 to '20-28 agreement between the Town of Lunenburg and the Monmouth Regional Transit Authority, or MART, for Council on Aging Services. So, we did get that red line document. We can see that the changes in there aren't anything substantial at all. Was there any discussion on any of it?
I had a question. On page seven, it talked about the insurance. Do we now responsible for the insurance?
Give me a sec.
It, it deleted a two, up to $2,000 reimbursement.
Yeah, the comment said that MART no longer reimbursing insurance cost. 7C.
We already, yeah, we, so we already did have to insure that vehicle.
The only actual change here is that.
The word carrier.
Yeah.
Did we receive?
It's all the same thing.
Are you looking at 7C?
Yeah, I think there's might be a couple of red lines to it.
Oh, you're looking at the comments here.
Yeah, the comments. So, it looked like we were eligible for up to $2,000 previously. It, so backtracking a little bit, my first question actually was, I jumped to the juice, but was this actually negotiated? Or they simply sent this to us?
Yeah, it's not a negotiated contract, yeah.
Yeah, my question was, do we know what that insurance cost would be, and does it fit in the budget? It's comment BF20.
So, it looks like they were only reimbursing $2,000 in the past?
Yes.
Frankly, I don't even know if they were actually reimbursing us, or if that was language. I've, I thought we always carried this.
Well, it says MART is no longer reimbursing insurance costs. I mean, when, where they even...
I don't, I don't know if, I don't know that answer.
Yeah, there might not have been a change from last year to this year.
Well, it, certainly a change in language, but perhaps not a change in practice.
Yeah, I just want to make sure there's no significant budget impact, because this is a three-year contract.
Yeah, I don't think, so, I don't think you really have an option, if, if there isn't. But I'm happy to go back to them with that question. This contract will expire before we meet again, though.
Okay. What is the date on here? I can scroll down and look, actually, if it's open.
I want to say it's the 26th.
Okay, so this expires in a couple of days.
And MART owns the vehicles? We don't own any of them?
No, they, they own the vehicle. It's theirs. That's right.
Okay. So, Glenn, Renee, do, do you want an answer to that question before you guys are ready to vote on this?
I don't know that we have a choice.
Yeah.
I'm more thinking this budget and the, the next two fiscal years. If, if in practice, we've been paying it all along, there is no impact. But the fact that they called out that MART is no longer reimbursing insurance cost makes me wonder.
Yeah.
I'm happy to go back to them.
I don't even know what the insurance cost would be. I mean, reimburse up to $2,000. Is it that much? I don't know. We only have one vehicle, is that right?
They just crashed one, didn't they?
Really?
I think so.
I'm just, I'm looking at his original communication.
Okay.
Actually, so he's asking for by September 26. It's probably actually September 30, so that's their request is September 26. "Contract between MART and the Town of Lunenburg is slightly revised from the previous version to reflect updated insurance requirements and changes in industry standards suggested by MART's insurance brokers. These updates ensure continued compliance with current risk management practices and legal regulations while also aligning with evolving transit service norms. These changes help protect both parties and maintain," they're just shifting the liability because, probably because we're the drivers, I would assume. So potentially, we can, we can do it on that, I can get that answer for, if we do it before next Tuesday.
Next Tuesday. What's the date of next Tuesday? Isn't it like the 30th?
The 30th, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
I'll just tell them, I'll let them know.
All right, and if not, we can figure it out.
They'll get a, it's coming in before midnight.
Right, yeah. Okay, so we can do that and then potentially vote on it.
One more question.
Okay.
Easier than that one. Paragraph D, it indicates that if the vehicle is totaled, MART receives the payout. I was just wondering if this value is substantially less than replacement cost, are we on the hook for?
That's their insurance, yeah. Nope.
Okay. Anything else on this? Okay.
Is there, is there a way we could approve it in the, in the event they tell you that, you know, that 2,000 is what it is?
Oh, sure.
Because I mean, if it's a $2,000, I mean, it's not like we'd cancel the program over 2,000, right?
Especially if we've been paying our own insurance in the past.
Right, yeah.
So I wouldn't want, I mean, it's a good question, but Elsa, it could very well be, if it's really not a negotiation.
You want to take it, you want to take the vote tonight and then I won't send it? Or, no, I don't like doing that.
I, yeah.
So your vote's your vote, you're authorizing the contract. I get, you could do it contingent upon something, you could vote to approve it.
I don't know what the contingency would be.
Contingent upon this, the $2,000 not aligning with, if we're already not being billed for, it's probably more complicated.
Yeah.
We have a meeting next Tuesday.
Right, I think it's okay, just wait.
Ooh, well, Tuesday's the Tri-Board.
It is, yeah. Well, we have to have a joint meeting before anyway, because we're going to do that appointment.
Yeah, you have to have a joint meeting with, is it School Committee? Just School Committee?
School Committee and the moderator as well.
Okay, for Monticic.
Monticic, yep.
First, their School Committee, so you have to have a separate meeting anyways.
Before the Tri-Board.
Yeah.
Yep.
Or after the Tri-Board.
I've, no. No.
10:00 PM meeting?
Yeah. And this, I mean, it'll be quick too, because we'll just approve it and sign it, you know, I don't think there's going to be much else once we get that answer, so. Okay, moving on. Minutes, we have executive session minutes from September 2, 2025. Have members reviewed this?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve them not for release?
I'll make a motion to approve the executive session minutes of September 2, 2025, not for release.
Second.
Any additional discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion passes unanimously. Warrants, I don't think we have any warrants tonight, do we?
Nope.
Any action items?
No.
Committee reports?
Library, you handle library, thank you very much. The Plan Board met last night, they had some training for employees for Open Gov, which was quite interesting. Special permit for ground mount solar located at 390 Goodrich. They did end up approving the site plan as well as a special permit for those. They do have a public, I mean, MBTA Communities Act upcoming, public hearing on October 27. I went to the AgCom meeting last night. The Agricultural Fair is this Saturday.
Ooh.
From 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM at the Passios Building. There'll be a lot of tractors and, I guess, some petting zoos and the like. And also, there'll be an Alpaca Fest on October 5th, from 11:00 AM to 3:00 PM at In the Meadow Farm, which is located on Page Street, right by Lancaster. And that's about it.
The School Committee met last week. They had some open houses last week as well, book fairs, they have Penny Wars coming up, a meeting for the Washington DC trip for the eighth graders. Homecoming scheduled for November 1st. For facilities, they had minimal damage to the rooftop from the fire, was quickly repaired. New refrigeration controls for the school kitchens being considered through a grant. There's been ongoing mechanical issues at the middle high school that are being addressed. There's need for additional custodial staff. There was a proposed $7,000 grant for, to enrich arts experiences, was discussed and approved. They talked about legal representation, consideration of engaging a new law firm for legal services due to better availability and response time, that was discussed and approved. There was a proposal to increase Courtney Fuller's hours by 15 hours per week, to increase office support at the middle, middle high school, that was approved. They talked about the FY '27 draft capital plan, prioritizing projects. The budget update, there's a current, the surplus was reported around $603,000 from the previous estimates, up from the previous estimates. And that was, oh, and they had a community Q and A on the budget and the overage. That was it?
No reports, just Stormwater Task Force and FinCom both meet this Thursday.
I had my first meeting of the Capital Planning Committee and the Bylaw Review Committee, and I don't know if I gave updates on those since I was last at a meeting, I was gone for two weeks. Not really much of an update, though. They were both the first meetings of the process, so mostly talking about timeline. So, yep, those are at least starting to go now. Let's see what's next. Upcoming meetings, so next week, September 30 is our next Tri-Board Meeting, and then our next regularly scheduled Select Board Meeting will be October 7. Public comment, is there any public comment from the public this evening? Anyone on Zoom? Okay, not seeing any. Any public comment from the Town Manager?
No.
Any public comment from the Board? All right, with that, is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn at 7:58 PM.
Second.
Mr. Chairman?
Oh, Mr. Rogers, I was waiting to see if you had a public comment, do you?
I did, I'm technologically challenged and I was having trouble pressing numbers. I'll be quick, because I know you've got quite a schedule. The question I have, I've got three. First of all, the water, as it pertains to Fitchburg. Who is looking for this agreement, Fitchburg or Lunenburg?
Do you want to answer that?
It's an intermunicipal agreement, it's a mutually beneficial agreement.
So.
Yeah, but how does the Lunenburg Water District play into this?
They don't.
Well, they should, because they're the ones that have, and that's the question I have, is the Town of Lunenburg receiving water or selling water?
We can, we can take this offline, if you have more questions about it.
No, yeah, I'm, I just, you know, because I remember signing an agreement years ago with the City of Fitchburg, and, you know, I just wondered where the situation is presented. Is Fitchburg looking for selling us water, or is Lunenburg looking to buy water? Okay, so.
Understood, we can talk about that offline, though. But was there any other public comments you had?
I'm happy to send him a copy of the agreement.
Okay.
The Town Agreement.
Great.
So, well, my point is you should key in the Water District, you don't have to send it to me, because I'm just a bystander, okay? The other, the other question I have is rumor mill, and I say that with capitals, are we, the Town, leasing to outside businesses or parties, part of the Passios Building?
That's been approved by this Select Board at multiple meetings.
What was the question? I didn't hear.
Are we leasing space at the, at TCP?
At TCP?
Yes.
To private, yes.
We are, okay, that's fine. The reason I ask is with the conversations about the roofs, which will be my next subject, you know, I think there's some pretty hefty liability issues, and I hope that all of that has been taken care of, and I'm sure it has, but with kids in there and leaky roofs, and you hear horror stories about that. It's a very important issue. The last question I have is the Passios roof. The two numbers that I heard were $300,000 for Pot and Parcel and something around a million four for everything. I wondered if powers-to-be have looked at the possibility of putting tops, big tops, fixed tops, on the roof of the, of the Passios rather than spending that kind of money, just as an interim until we decide as a Town what we're going to do. $300,000 is a lot, and a million four is worth, so those are the three issues. Thank you for cutting me the slack, and I appreciate the opportunity.
All right, thanks, Mr. Rogers, have a good night.
You as well.
Okay. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All right, any additional discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The motion passes unanimously, and the Select Board is adjourned at 8:01 PM. Have a good night, everyone, we'll see you next week at our Tri-Board Meeting.